Change the zoning of eight of those 29, you know, making up approximately 49 acres. So just to give you an idea, so it's, there's two different conglomerations of properties. One that is close to the southern border with the town of Bluffton, or northern border of the town of Bluffton, and then the remainder of the properties further north, that about Davis Road 170, and then the rear portion goes to River Ridge. Current zoning of all of these properties is T2 rural, and the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to C3 neighborhood mixed use. T2 rural, of course, as you're aware, allows a density of approximately one dwelling unit per three acres, so it's a very low-density rural zoning. C3 neighborhood mixed use, which the applicant is proposing the change of zoning to, that allows, it's primarily a suburban district with some allowances for some higher-density development. A conventional, single-family subdivision, the density would be 2.6 units per acre, so we're looking at roughly, you know, maybe a seven- or eightfold increase in the allowable density with a single-family subdivision. It does allow, if somebody, they could choose to do a traditional community plan that allows a total density of up to 3.5 dwellings per acre. The northern of these parcels qualifies as far as the minimum site area. And then also, there is some allowances for multifamily at 12 units per acre, but the total number of units is capped at 80 units. So, just to give you a rough idea, it's meant to be primarily a residential suburban district with some opportunities for higher density, you know, with some multifamily, but there's a kind of a cap of the magnitude of that type of development. So that gives you kind of a history of the request and what the applicant is proposing. Let's see, so, you know, in reviewing this application, I will say that, I apologize, I've lost my place here, okay, sorry. So, the one big change that has come forward since the last time the Planning Commission saw this application, is that the developer, you know, they have worked to find out a way to develop 24 affordable units for veterans, and they will go into the details of that and how that will be integrated into the community. And so that is a big change as far as, there was no provision in the original application, that is something that the developer is actively seeking for the site. And from the, I guess, the way that that would be implemented in the future, it's important for the Planning Commission to know that the zoning amendment, the, in and of itself, that condition cannot be attached to the amendment. However, as that, as this moves to council, there's the possibility that the developer can enter into a development agreement with county council. And with that instrument, then, that opens up the opportunity to, you know, for the council to say, oh, well, as a condition of this rezoning, we would like to enter into this development agreement, and then, then, at that point, get into the details of how this affordable housing would be, everything from the number of units to the, the way they would be integrated into the community, the way the affordability would be tracked, all of that could be worked out through that tool of the development agreement. So, you know, I wanted to mention that because I think that's a very important component of this, and you'll be hearing about that from the applicant, but it's something that, when the Planning Commission is making its recommendation, and that is your way in that particular aspect of this development, I believe that, you know, the appropriate way in moving forward is to say, we, you know, if that's a factor in, let's say, the support or, you know, or how the Planning Commission wants to act in the development, that could be a condition attached, that we support this application if the developer is able to work with council on the development agreement to establish X number of units of affordable housing. Does that make sense? It's, it's kind of like saying, you're kind of kicking the can down the road and saying to council, "We support this if you go ahead and take these extra steps with the development agreement." So, that's an important component of this, but in staff reviewing this development, the other concerns that we had about this particular rezoning still remain in place, you know, so we're still concerned that we have two discreet properties that are seeing a very significant increase in density. In addition, you know, the remaining properties that are zone T2 rural, many of those are heirs property, family properties, that people continue to live on, so what this will do is result in, and this is, you know, three of our eight criteria have to do with compatibility or logical pattern of development, and that raises a concern among staff because of the way that, and we do recognize it's very difficult to assemble a lot of properties, but we do have a lot of concerns about the, you know, having rezoning, change, really, significant changes in the land use policy of properties that are right next door to each other. So that's one of our concerns. I think the second one that we had mentioned in the past, the map has, this is a Hamlet place type overlay, this is coming in as C3 neighborhood mixed use. Now, I will mention that, the property that is zoned C3 neighborhood mixed use, there is a staff-level procedure called a traditional community plan, and that's something that the applicant can follow and still come, you know, meet this overall goal of a Hamlet place type, but once again, that's not something that could be a condition of the rezoning, it's something that could be worked out in the development agreement. So that's another thing that Planning Commission, we're kind of like saying, well, if we support this, then we want this to happen as well, you know, if they, if this moves forward, we believe it should be a traditional community plan. So, there's that issue as well, and I will say, we're still concerned because we have land that is being upzoned that adjoins the town of Bluffton, and it really makes sense for the development of that southernmost property that is being upzoned to be very closely coordinated with the land at the intersection of Bluffton Parkway and 170 that is in the town of Bluffton's jurisdiction, especially with respect to access, because of, you know, we're concerned about separation of intersections and access management on 170, and so the more that things are interconnected, that allows for a more orderly pattern of development and preserves the capacity of our road network, so. And Kevin, did you want to speak about the TIA at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll have Kevin speak about the traffic impact analysis, and then I'll come back and talk about staff recommendations.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said there is an eligibility component for a traditional community plan?
Yes.
That would have to be part of a development agreement?
No.
Could it be a part of a...
So, yeah, so basically, if a property is zoned C3 neighborhood mixed use, the owner of that property has the option to do a traditional community plan. So that option's available, but if you're doing a rezoning, there's nothing in the rezoning process that provides assurance that that's going to happen, except through the tool of a development agreement.
I understand the traditional, correct me if I'm wrong here, but a traditional community plan requires a minimum of 80 acres?
Of 40 acres.
Forty acres.
Yeah, neighborhood scale, traditional community plan, has a minimum acreage of, you have to have a minimum of 40 acres.
Okay.
So that, that parcel there that is up on the screen, that would be, could be eligible for a traditional community plan.
Okay.
Okay. And...
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Kevin.
Yes, so, this project triggered a TIA, and...
Can you turn your...
Yes, yes, this, this project triggered what we call a TIA, so we had, the consultants perform a traffic impact study to actually prove that the site doesn't necessarily adversely packs, adversely impact SC 170 and the surrounding road network. So as you can see on the screen, that there is the proposed project, and there is a couple of access points on 170. 170, of course, is an SCDOT road, so the applicant was well-informed and made sure that the access points met SCDOT requirements. The distance and spacing on SCD, on, between the access points are adequate. That first access point you see at the bottom, that is a right turn lane into the actual development, and it meets SCDOT codes with respect to the length of the storage and the taper of the storage. So, Beaufort County Engineering concurs with what is proposed. The second access point is on Davis Road, they're proposing a right turn and a left turn to make sure that there's an, there's not crowding at that particular location. So, we had, we had a consultant look at that particular intersection because we were concerned with that particular intersection, and we made sure that what was being proposed was adequate. So, when we came back from our analysis, it said that 46 feet is enough, but the developer is actually providing 75 feet, so Beaufort County concurs with that particular access as well.
How about signalization at that intersection?
Yes, we also looked at the signalization, and the level of service at the signals surrounding the area does not go below a level of service D, so that's within our TIA code. So this, this particular development in the future wouldn't negatively impact the surrounding intersections to a point that it goes below a level of service D.
I'm not understanding, are you saying that there wouldn't be no signalization onto 170?
Well, those are right in, right outs, those are right in...
I understand there's a, up on Davis Road, you mentioned a left-hand turn?
Right.
Which means it's got to cross the median of 170 to go left?
Yes.
With traffic coming 60 miles an hour in each direction?
Correct.
Is there going to be a signal there at all?
There will not be a signal there because a signal isn't warranted. So, when we do the traffic impact study, we generate all the trips from this particular development, and then we have to disperse them, we call it a sign, we assign where they go. So a certain amount of trips will go to Davis, a certain amount of trips will go to 170, a certain amount of trips will go to the back street. So based on the dispersion of the trips, we are, we are, we are looking at that as a full access, because all of the traffic won't be going there, which means that when you get there, of course, you would, of course, you would have to wait for gaps, but you won't have to wait as long because it's not as many cars going to that one's intersection. So, for lack of better words, a car will pull up there, and then another car will pull up, and another car will pull up, but the wait time is not as long, so there will be a gap on 170, but it won't be a super-long gap because you don't have 20 cars there, you might have four cars there, to try to make it in layman terms, because all of the cars isn't going to Davis, it's dispersed between three different access points. So, to answer your question, no signal is warranted there, because the volume of traffic at that particular location isn't high enough.
Currently.
Okay.
You mean, you mean currently?
Yeah, no, 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 this is future traffic, we're looking at the future traffic.
I just want to ask him a question.
Kevin, I have just a quick question. Of the seven intersections that you evaluated, I think I heard you say that none were going to be less than a level of service D?
Right.
And I'm not familiar, is E also considered an acceptable level? If it's below E, that is no longer acceptable, or is D your lowest?
Well, well, level of service D, if, if, if the site is currently a level of service E, and the project doesn't change that, then that is factored in until our evaluation. But if this site doesn't bring an intersection from a level of service B to a level of service D, or a level of service C to a level of service D, I mean, beyond a level of service D, then per our code, it is satisfactory, you know? If it goes below that D, then we have to talk to them during our meetings about how they mitigate that. This particular project didn't require that.
And how many of the seven intersections did you see a reduction in level of service?
It was a few, I would have to bring up the TIA, and I don't have it right in front of me right now, but it wasn't a degradation, because it's not like this is a super Walmart, so it wasn't like a huge...
Like a B to a C, or that kind of thing?
Right, right, it wasn't a degradation at any of the intersection. If it was, we would be talking about that.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Are any of these improvements, ingress egress terms, being paid for by the county?
No, no, this is all developer-paid improvement, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more question. I think there's, there's another parcel below what you've shown on the screen there?
Yes.
That's currently going to be for future...
Oh, yeah.
...development. Does the traffic study include that area as well, for whatever they might put there?
Yes, yes, we, we have to focus on the entire corridor, and that was within the study area, so we have to look at that as well, and that was incorporated in.
Would there be an egress from that particular parcel onto 170?
That's a good question, I don't know if we would, I don't know if we can make that determination tonight, but we would have to look at the distances, because it's an SCDOT requirement, and the spacing is encouraged to be at a certain distance, so, because that light there is very critical to us, we probably would look at it very, very closely.
Okay, because it looks like that would, that's awfully close to where Buckwalter intersection is there, and all of a sudden you got four access points within a quarter mile.
Yeah, yeah, we would look at that very closely, we would.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Kevin? Rob, do you want to come on back?
Yeah. Well, as far as staff recommendation, you know, we've gone through the nine criteria, and I will say that three of them are related to the issue of compatible development, and so one of our major concerns about this is that you have two areas upzoning surrounded by existing land that is remaining, T2 rural, you know, with residences on those sites, and, you know, so when we look at our recommendation, and this is really going back to what we recommended last summer, staff still recommends denial, but I will say that we do recognize what the applicant is trying to do with the development of these affordable units, and I'll get to that at the end of the recommendation. But, you know, the comprehensive plan calls for development in this area, but we believe that the manner that is being proposed is not compatible with the existing surrounding land, and, you know, we believe that, you know, more integrated or, you know, community level of planning would be necessary so that this area, you know, if the residents would like to see it upzoned and developed in the future, that should happen in a more, a way that could really be more compatible with all the parcels in this area versus just a portion of them. We also believe that because of the proximity to Bluffton, and, you know, that there is a major commercial area proposed just to the south of the site, really makes sense for Bluffton to be a major player in the development of these parcels, and we did direct staff to go to the town, but obviously, the town has to be willing to work, you know, there has to be an agreement between those two parties to annex, but I believe that that would be better approach, especially given the question you just raised with access on 170 of that parcel, the south parcel of this rezoning. And, you know, so with those issues, we have a lot of concerns about this upzoning, and believe it's not compatible with the manner that the comprehensive plan would call for this, and doesn't, especially doesn't meet three of our criteria that pertain to compatibility. But we do, I do mention that the provision of 24 units addressing the much-needed affordable housing for the community, and especially for veterans, that is something that is a goal of the comprehensive plan, the creation of those units, and so that we, you know, that is something that the Planning Commission will need to weigh in and make into your recommendation. You'll be hearing from the applicant about more of the details of that, and if the Planning Commission does decide, you know, that you're interested in moving forward with this, to see that, that development occur, that that could be part of a recommendation as a condition, because obviously, the decision that the Planning Commission is making today is whether to upzone, but down the road, when this goes to the council, that's when the development agreement process would take place, where these units could be then, you know, detailed in that agreement as well. And I believe the same also with the manner of development, whether they follow a traditional community plan, similar to what they're showing in some of the conceptual sketches here, versus more conventional development that could also occur under the C3 zoning. So, any questions?
You mentioned connectivity between, I think, the various parcels and with the rural homes, rural properties, not being able to, being between them, correct? What would be a minimal level of connectivity that you would require in order to make this more of a traditional place-community?
I mean, that's a hard thing to measure, but I, you know, because of the nature of this area, this is approximately, it's over 100 acres, if you just look at the area between Davis Road, River Ridge, Bluffton Parkway and 170, some sort of area-wide plan, you know, that the residents are active participants in, maybe bringing in the schools, because I think the concern is, I mean, not everyone was, is interested in upzoning their property at this point, and so that connectivity can't be provided, even with the best intentions, because you don't have, not, not every property owner is on board.
So there is no minimal amount that you could identify?
Minimal amount of connect, I mean, that's a hard thing to quantify.
Well, I understand that, but is it going to require the whole 100 acres to be integrated, or another 20 acres, you know, a connectivity between parcel number eight and the other seven parcels? I mean, you need to understand what type of integration or connectivity that you want in order to be satisfied on a traditional place-type community. Anyway, it's a question, maybe I want to come back to it later.
Yeah.
I have, I do have a, not to take the whole podium, I have a couple of the questions, but I'll defer to my teammates up here.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
I, I do, forgive me for being late, I'm sorry, there's a medical emergency. My question, Rob, is whether or not the, the town of Bluffton has agreed in a way that they had not agreed, the developer said that he had been denied an opportunity for annexation in the town of Bluffton. Has that changed since our summer meeting on this question?
That's a question for the applicant, I'm not aware that there's been any further discussions with the town.
Thanks. But, but you're still holding out that, that, I mean, what you said earlier is that that is the venue that should be open for discussion, right? You're still, the position of the Beaufort County Planning Department is that that is something that should be pursued, but as you, I don't mean to repeat what you said, but to your knowledge, that has not changed.
To my knowledge, correct.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Rob, I think you mentioned this in your opening comments, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, the parcel that's detached from the larger development proposal, I think, is 7.76 acres, and my understanding is even with infill TCP, you have to have at least eight acres?
Correct.
Exactly.
So, how can this even be considered for this rezoning if it doesn't meet the code requirements?
Well, that, that parcel does not, you're right, it does not meet the minimum threshold for a TC, either an infill or neighborhood scale. The other parcel does, so it's, you're right, not all of it does, but part of it does, I mean, the majority does.
Thank you.
But we're, we're being asked for everything?
Yes.
Not just the top parcel or the bottom parcel?
Yeah, you're being asked for the whole thing.
All eight parcels.
Yeah, all eight parcels, yeah, okay.
One last question. Has there been any feedback from the schools, Riverview, abutting this...
River Ridge.
Excuse me, River Ridge, River Ridge, abutting this proposed development?
We've contacted the schools, we have not received any, any feedback from them.
Do you know the condition of those schools in terms of capacity?
Most of these schools in Southern Beaufort County are at, or overcapacity.
Okay, so, this will add to their capacity issue?
Yes, I mean, obviously, multifamily has less of an impact per unit, but it, you know, anything, you know, is going to have an impact on schools, any, any type of residential.
Okay.
Rob, excuse me, what are the pros and cons of upscaling the whole, upzoning that whole area? I mean, I understand some people are happy living in a, what is it, a T2R, but if it was upzoned, would there be any negative effect of a recommendation just to do the whole area all at once, instead of having to come to us at different parcels each time, somebody comes forward?
I think the biggest concern is that the people who are not participating in the upzoning are, they're going to be dealing with incompatible development right next door, and, you know, the zoning is supposed to follow kind of a logical gradation of, you know, it's something that's laid out by a future land use plan, and it's supposed to follow that, and so...
I'm just looking at this right now, and we see a whole lot of different development around there, where it's much denser in the entire surrounding, it appears to be, and certainly somebody doesn't have to build six more homes on their property if they're happy with one home in that, in that area. I go back to the whole thing, what's the downside of upzoning? Just saying the whole area should be upzoned at the same time and do it.
So, that would be something that would have to be in action of the county stepping in, because when something is submitted by the applicant, it has to be at the consent of the property owner. So the applicant, with their application, has eight affidavits signed by property owners saying that they concur with the upzoning. If council said, "We think the whole area should upzone," then they would have to come back and have that be a council-initiated application for rezoning.
Yeah, the other distinction here is that those eight parcels are owned by one entity.
Understood.
And so they're asking for those properties that they own to be upzoned. The rest are private properties owned individually, and they, they have to choose to participate, and if they choose not to, then that's the way it remains unless there is some appropriate override from the county, is my understanding.
Well, one's voluntary upzoning, which is what this, this one's asking for, and the other is an involuntary, which would be initiated by council, is that correct?
Well, it's not that easy, the initiated by council, private property upzoning, I don't believe.
Yeah, it would, it would be a bold move, I mean, it would be council saying that we, whether we have all the property owners on board, we think this whole area should upzone, you know, and that's, that's certainly, you know, something that they would have to weigh in, but that's why as staff, you know, it is difficult, it's hard to assemble properties like this, but we, we believe having these two discreet odd shapes is just, you know, it's creating incompatible pattern of development, which we have seen a lot of in the county, you know, through annexation and things like that, but it's not something that we want to see happen, it's...
Thank you, Rob.
Okay.
I guess we're ready to hear from the applicant, is that Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, it's a pleasure to be before you again, and I thank you again for your service. to be before you again, and I thank you again for your service. As I mentioned, one of the times I was here before, I also have served on the planning commission some years ago, and I respect the evenings and other work that it takes. I am the attorney for the several applicants. I'm also tonight, have several people on our team that, we have some of them from out of town, that I want to ask you to listen with us, to us about those things, those people and what they're saying. But before I introduce our next team member, I want to address two points in the questions that y'all had of Mr. Merchant. One question had to do with the potential of annexing in the Bluffton. First, we have had no further communication with the town of Bluffton since we reported last summer. They made it clear to us that at least under the current constitution of the mayor and council, that it would be a waste of time, because they're unwilling to do anything that involves an increase in permitted through zoning residences in the town of Bluffton. And if they were to annex and upzone from, say, on this almost eight-acre parcel, it would qualify under the three-acre rule, one house per three acres, for two houses. And that would be it. And so, obviously, that wouldn't work from our standpoint. As to the potential of Bluffton annexing that whole thing that we are presenting to you in these two parcels, that won't work either because of the legal requirement of connectivity, contiguity. We have to adjoin the town of Bluffton boundary line, and the smaller, lower piece does, but the upper piece does not, so it's not even eligible for the conversation about that. The second thing I would like briefly to address is that I do represent an entity, Mosaic Development LLC, it does not own these parcels. It has these parcels under contract. And some of the actual owners of portions of these properties are here tonight in the That is why Mr. Merchant mentioned that the application package included affidavits from the actual owners of these parcels. So I want to clear up those, those things and reserve time to come back to you on legal issues a little bit later. The person I'd like to introduce to you now is a gentleman by the name of John Boomer He is not only a former professional football player, but he's a Naval Academy graduate, he's a retired four-star U.S. Naval Admiral, he has commanded the U.S. Sixth Fleet, he's a career aircraft carrier fighter pilot, Top Gun type. He has a sincere interest in the well-being and programs and opportunities to encourage the well-being of American veterans and particularly disabled American veterans. A little footnote about his military career, during the presidency of George H.W. Bush, Admiral Stufelbeam was a military aide to President Bush at the White House and carried what we call in the colloquialism, the nuclear football. And he had numerous other high-level responsibilities. He brings to his volunteer work for the benefit of disabled American veterans a huge experience. And I'd like to introduce him now. He has a couple of other people who are going to speak to you about the veterans' needs and situation and opportunities here in Beaufort County.
Here's a question. Is the Admiral, you see, the primary leader of the foundation, the LV Foundation? Okay, so he's speaking to us from that vantage point as well?
Right, and there are others.
So we can ask him questions pertaining to the foundation?
I would think so.
Sure. Thank you.
Admiral? While he's walking up, after these gentlemen have spoken about the military housing issues, then we'll come back and address the planning issues in some more detail. Admiral?
I owe him a speaking fee for my introduction. It has been upgraded quite a bit. So, good evening, Chairman Pappas, ladies and gentlemen, and thanks for this opportunity to, to speak with you. You know, a lot more about me than I know about you, but what I will say here now is that I am not a developer, and I am not an investor in this particular proposal. So I am here to talk to you tonight about our foundation. I'm the director of the Low County Veterans Housing Foundation, and my intent is to give you the what, why, and the how of our foundation. What I want you to leave here with tonight is an understanding that the foundation means housing plus support. I'll come back to that in a little more detail as to why that's important, for disabled veterans and first responders in your communities who have given so much and want to have the ability to give back. And by the way, I should say that all of us as veterans have some, and first responders, have some level of disability. Some of it visible, and that tends to get a lot of public recognition, but the reality is, much of the disabilities are invisible. I am a disabled American military veteran, I served more than 30 years in the U.S. Navy, which included combat in the Balkans, Southwest Asia, Pakistan, Iraq, Lebanon, and Africa. And I've been involved in veterans' issues, particularly for traumatic brain injury and suicide intervention since 2008. As a disabled vet, I struggle well today because I live in a terrific community with a brotherhood of veterans and have access to world-class support in Washington, D.C., and I have a purpose. But it wasn't always this way, as I have suffered from physical injury, traumatic brain injury from concussions, and major depressive disorder. When I came to live, where I came to live, after my transition out of the military, and the support that I have there made the difference for me, and it fuels my reason for living today. And it adds to my desire to want to give back, but in more affordable locations for others who are less fortunate than I, living up there in D.C. I'm very thankful for, and to, my foundation partner, Mike Corey, whom I hope will join us shortly, he's back here, thank you, who, living here in Bluffton as one of yours, invited me to join this initiative in this veteran-rich area that has a need for housing, work, training, as well as support for those who have given so much. From this invitation and from my own work, after my own retirement from the military, I found purpose and passion to advocate for and help the two professions I grew up in, notably the NFL, when I was a football player back in the 1970s, before almost all of you were born, and later in the U.S. military, where buddies from my football career commit suicide at six times the national average, and veterans in active duty who are at a 72% higher risk of suicide than those who have not served. And while there's a variety of reasons for these suicide rates, the common ones include loss of unit and self-identity, loss of camaraderie of those having shared and survived harrowing traumatic events, both physical and emotional, that few can relate to, much less understand. The inability of our predominantly male egos to ask for help, but struggle with the veteran's question of, "Why can't I fix this myself?" Sinking in loneliness and isolation, often into addiction and worse, clinical depression, which you may know at 95% is the reason for suicide. Often, many in pain lose not only the hope, but the purpose in life, as they struggle with the stigma of losing control and not yet having accepted what many of us now know in the adage of, "It's okay not to be okay," and becoming recalibrated warriors. What I'm painting for you is a little bit of a picture of community. That loss of community is devastating to the veteran community and to first responders. This is why this foundation has been established, to build an environment and provide an opportunity where disabled veterans and first responders can have the pride of desirable homeownership or long-term leasing for those who cannot yet afford a home, training for business and leadership opportunities, a sense of belonging to a community where they can give back and have the well-being they knew when they served on active duty or responded to difficult and sometimes horrific situations in our communities. Belonging and contributing to a community of mutual support often breaks the cycle of depression that leads to suicide. Again, as the most important thing, to take note, suicide is an acknowledged leading public health problem in America today, and it's growing. And it's the, it's the second-leading cause of death amongst 25 to 34-year-olds in our country, where males commit suicide at four times the rate of females, and account for nearly twice as many deaths as from homicides. Today, veterans suffer suicide nearly every hour of every day. And it's my purpose not to sit on the sidelines anymore, but to do something about it, given the teammates and the comrades that I have lost. Stimming the rate of suicide is the most important thing we can do now, especially for those most vulnerable. How we do this is by creating a community of and for deserving servants with all that a community provides. It's not about handouts, it's about hand-ups for those looking for opportunities, support, and training to thrive and live well, who otherwise might not have this chance. We do this by raising substantial funding that Mike Corey and I have experienced and with success, to include an endowment of the future, to fill the shortfalls veterans and first responders may be experiencing to buy or lease a home, receive training for entrepreneurial business ownership or management, have onsite services as needed by, by these community members, access to build unit symbiotic relationships, such as with Operation Patriots Forward Operating Base, or OPFOB. And you'll hear more in a moment from J.R. Brown, the founder of OPFOB. And then access to the area medical, including the new clinic announced for Beaufort, and support services, such as that provided by your own Carolyn Furman. What makes our foundation transformational as a nonprofit is the funding for housing supplemental, ownership and management of facilities, provision and training and support programs to be all-in, all the time, for an enduring and permanent location to serve the needs of the disabled vets and first responders who wish to live in this desirable area. We will employ professional staff, including applicant screening expertise, and anticipate that some number of our community will become staff serving their fellows in need. From this work in this arena for over 16 years, I have learned that there is some kind of satisfactory workaround for every physical disability, including housing. But there are disparate and boutique treatments and programs scattered across this nation for brain injuries and chronic pain. But there are few holistic, community-wide programs that include living accommodations other than just for the very temporary. That's why this initiative is important, because it not only will be comprising of a breathtaking development in harmony with nature and Low Country architecture, a place anyone would want to live, it will be a model for planned development elsewhere, with my goal of it becoming a national jewel for the most deserving in our society. The truth in America is, almost everyone has a heart for veterans and first responders in words. But actions don't always keep pace. Consider that there are significant efforts to house homeless veterans, such as fostered by the likes of T2T, Towers of Towers, and community shelters, but they're at the low end. These are handouts. By contrast, many, if not most, military retirees live well after second or subsequent careers and thrive in communities such as Sun City and senior retirement communities at the high end. But what's missing? There's nothing in between. There are no, are no communities other than for the homeless or the well-to-do. This is what we seek to create. This is the vision, to span the gap, to enable productive, thriving lives able to give back to their communities by living in them and contributing among our citizenry. By being part of American communities where comprehensive support exists in housing, work including business ownership, medical availability, training in a variety of support programs, this is what our aim is from the foundation. What's missing and what's needed are communities, planned neighborhoods, where veterans and cousin first responders aren't hand-out but hand-up to empower thriving lives rather than just survival. This is a reality and a new development in planned urban living. Again, what makes us different is that it's housing and support for the veterans and first responders. Our initiative cannot stand alone. I have tried for 16 years to do this. My last effort was over two years in North Carolina, and we failed. We have to be a lesser-included part as a jewel of a larger community. So on behalf of all veterans and first responders, I ask you to support our transformational proposal here in beautiful Bluffton, and I think it will make a difference in the whole community. So thanks for listening, and for your consideration, but before I turn it over to some of my esteemed colleagues, I'd like to read a letter from the South Carolina Secretary of Veterans Affairs, General Todd McCaffrey, after which I will ask J.R. Brown, a U.S. Marine veteran and the founder of OPFOB, followed by my foundation partner, Mike Corey, another Navy veteran, and lastly, to your favorite son, General Fig Newton. As a fellow fighter pilot, I say with an extreme amount of pride, as a four-star, retire now, four-star general, coming back to the area that he grew up in, the first African-American flyer and leader of the air demonstration team, the Thunderbirds. He is somebody that I am proud to get to know. So from General McCaffrey, if you'll bear with me, "This is November 27th to the Beaufort County Planning Commission, dear members. The South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs supports a wide range of entities with an interest in meeting veteran needs and leveraging veteran talent. We have recently become aware of an emerging effort in Beaufort County focused on this objective. The recently established nonprofit, Low Country Veterans Housing Foundation, appears aligned with our agency's principles and focus. We understand that this new nonprofit may make it easier for some in Beaufort County, disabled veterans and first responders to find and retain housing solutions. Given the ongoing population growth across the Low Country, we recognize the efforts to both expand the supply of available housing and provide vehicles for veterans to more affordably secure housing that is good for those who serve our nation uniformly and for the state of South Carolina. The U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs assesses that there are more than 20,000 veterans in Beaufort County. While the majority of these veterans are thriving members of the community, others remain as a result of disabilities or financial situations, and are challenged to find quality housing that meets their needs or provides accessibility to other services. Given these conditions, we support any effort that aims to support veterans without placing additional financial burdens on them. New veteran-focused nonprofits like the Low Country Housing Veteran Foundation may provide important new links to solutions for some of the Beaufort disabled veteran population. Those types of initiatives and efforts are important contributions towards veteran support, both in Beaufort and across our great state. Sincerely, Todd McCaffrey, General, U.S. Army Retired." With that, I'd like to invite my co-
Before you go on, I have a comment, and there may be others, but I'd like to address to you.
You're honored.
First of all, commend, tremendous initiative on your part to help our veterans. We certainly are aware of the sacrifices they've made, and we hear their sound- We certainly are aware of the sacrifices they've made, and we hear their sound of freedom every day over our roofs. So I commend that. My concern is that any effort to support them is sustaining and solid, solid backing, solid track record, and stayability, longevity. And so I'm going to test you for that. I have a question. Based on your statistics, over 5,000 veterans in Beaufort County have some degree of disability. I think that's very conservative based on the fact that we have so many veterans. I understand too that this development is proposing, I believe, 24 disabled veterans' dwelling units. It's less than 10%. Why settle for such a low number for such a dynamic need? Why don't you go for 20%? Why can't it be higher? Why must it be less than 10%?
I would say that we're not going to settle for anything less than 100%. But we can't bite, you know, there's only one way to eat an elephant, right? So this is a proposal that has come to us. We see the benefit of it to put down a new template in this planned urban living to create this holistic community for the benefit of veterans and first responders. We can't forget them because they're a growing population and unfortunately within us. My intent, my goal, is to make this a national template that we take all over the country. It's being done in other types of venues, but this would be the first of its type. Most of that leading initiative has come in the medical community, and they do it in areas that already have substantial housing available and training available. But there are large veteran cashments, large areas of veterans, including Beaufort County and surrounding, that are in need of housing and training and support. And so from my perspective, this is just a first start. It's a proof of concept that we can get it to work here in Beaufort County, and with that, we're going to export it. My goal is that we go coast to coast.
Thank you.
Is that enough?
That's it. It's a good start. Any other questions you have for the Admiral?
Yeah, I do. When was the Low Country Veterans Housing Foundation started?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question. It was started when I was invited several months ago to come down here and learn about this initiative.
Who invited you down here, if I might ask?
Mike Corey.
Okay.
Who will be up here to say a few words as one of my partners here. We filed and now have the foundation with its Articles of Incorporation, with the state now filed, and we are now applying for the 501(c)(3) status so that we can raise funds and build an endowment to support this. If I remember correctly, and one of the things that I will admit is I can't rely on memory very much anymore, is that it was last month that we actually filed and got the foundation established legally. A last for correction from my colleagues if they know more.
And you said you had a similar initiative up in North Carolina, I guess Campbell-June area?
No, interesting project. I'll keep it short, because that's why I wrote my remarks down, because I tend to go off. There is a, there was a very wealthy Miami developer named Wayne Hisinga, owner of the Miami Dolphins and other stuff, who had purchased about 2,000 hours, 2,000 acres in the inner banks of North Carolina, on a northern shore of the Albemarle Sound outside the town of Edenton, area called Sandy Point. As they were building into that planned urban development, I was approached because of work that I had been doing in northern states up to this point, and asked to come down and consider to put in a comprehensive head, neck, and spine center of excellence to treat with the physical and emotional trauma of TBI and physical damage, if you will, from veterans and first responders. That was well on its way as we went into the second year with ample funding until Mr. Hisinga died. When he passed away, his children were interested only in dissolving the Hisinga Foundation and taking their spoils and going to the beach. What I discovered in that part of the journey was that it is, just from my experience, tantamount to impossible to create a community of just veterans and/or just first responders in the community that I described, without being part of a larger development, because there's an economy of scale and cost for construction, and there is the reality of what does a community, what does community mean to somebody who comes in who otherwise wouldn't be in the community, much less feel welcome there. So it's a sense of returning the community of America that we used to hear from our grandparents, and trying to recreate that now between this low end of the handouts and the high end of those that are doing well, where there's a hole, where there are not those communities to provide the housing and the services for these people today.
And this previous gentleman that owned these 2,000 acres, how many years ago was that they were trying to do this?
He started, I think, back in 2005.
Okay.
He got the support from the governor of North Carolina to develop this as the lead project for the inner banks development going into, I wish I could remember dates as well as I should, going into the pandemic.
Okay.
And it was coming out of the pandemic that he passed away.
Okay.
Yes, Sussman?
Yes, ma'am.
You said you have filed your Articles of Incorporation for the foundation?
Yes, ma'am.
I talked to the Secretary of State's office today, and they said they have no indication that there is a 501(c)(3).
That's correct. The 501(c)(3) is going to take about, what is it, five or 10 months for it to be established? The foundation is established. We're applying for a 501(c)(3) status.
Okay, so I'm confused, because in the developer's application to us this evening and that we got in our agenda package, said the 501(c)(3) exists, but it doesn't.
Not that I know of. But I'm not an attorney either, so-
So that might be a question for Mr. Am I right or am I wrong?
I cannot answer that question for you, so-
So tell me what your status is. Like, for example, in the documentation that you've provided, it would be great if we had some, you know, Articles of that incorporation or your filing. We've heard two names, you and your colleague, Mr. Corey. Are there other officers or-
One other one, David Schmitz. David Schmitz, Mike Corey, John Stufelbein. We are the three directors of the foundation.
Is there a board being established?
Not yet. We intend to have one, and we may have a potential candidate sitting in the back of the room tonight.
And in the, I'm not familiar with how one provides that filing, is there a fundraising strategic plan? Again, under the developer's proposal, or Mr. Johnson representing the developers, that requires a darn lot amount of fundraising. And in order to do that, of course, you can't start now, you have to be incorporated, you know, as a 501(c)(3) in the state, and as you say, that may take 10 months. If ground breaks in 2027, as was in the papers, that's a very short time to develop a capital reserve to do all the projects that you're trying to do. What's your sense of that timeline and what kind of capital you're going to need?
So there are two things at play here. You have the mosaic development plan to develop this community, and a sub-portion of it to be available for disabled veterans and first responders that will be funded by our foundation. The investors for the larger corporation are other people with deep pockets that are interested in their own development for their own reasons. Our fundraising is only going to be for those veterans and first responders who will be our neighbors in this community.
The 24 units.
Right.
But it seems to me, and what I read from, in our packet, is that there are things like business development, you know, small business ownership, some opportunity for, you know, being first in line to develop, I don't know, sort of a community, very super cool strip mall, et cetera, et cetera, business development.
Right.
You, this evening, have mentioned, you know, people who have disabilities that are unknown and unshone.
Right.
So that indicates to me a kind of medical access. I mean, what is the number of fundraise? What's your target number at fundraising? Is it a million?
Well, to start with, a million. My goal is 100 million.
And tell me the timeline of 100 million.
Boy, I wish I was that smart. I wish I was clairvoyant. I have been involved in-
Don't mock my question. It's an important question, because the developer is suggesting that the inclusion of 24 units is a compelling reason in favor of his argument for this development. So it's not an idle question.
Don't take it as such. But also, I cannot, I have never, first of all, I should say that I'm a certified professional business coach. I've been working in that industry now for a number of years. I have never met, if I go to the high end, which might be Lockheed Martin Corporation, the largest defense corporation in America, or other large corporations, they don't have 10-year plans that survive contact with reality. So they go for three- to five-year plans. I'm a disciple of the one-page business plan as it's developed from within that community of businesses to own and operate, and we work on a three to no more than five-year span out. Within three years, the goal, first year, our goal is to strike for a million, our third year is to strike for 5 million, and then my goal for the third year would be, fifth year, would be 10 million. Then we start to multiply that over time to get to 100 million, which gives us the ability to create an endowment that would then be able to provide for the veterans and first responders in perpetuity.
My last question, sorry to take all this time, but, you know, to my colleague's question, one of the things I, you were, I admire your honesty, because you used the word, my question was, what's the model? Have you ever done this? My colleague asked that, and you said you had failed. Now, you gave the reasons for your failure, but fundamentally is that you had the push and the assets from this foundation, foundation owner, whatever.
Hisinga Foundation, yeah.
Yeah, right. I know who that is. He dies, you know, kids want to loo, carry on. But the fact is, I have not heard from you that you have that kind of wind backing you. You don't have a foundation backing you now. So I hear you, but to me, as a planning group, and I'm only speaking for myself here, I believe in your aspirations, but it's only aspirational. You failed once. I mean, couldn't you admit maybe the model isn't a good model?
Well, it is a tough model to secure when the owner and the benefactor of it who was funding it passes away. But I have been involved in other projects. In fact, Mike Corey and I have been involved in programs where we have raised tens of millions of dollars for the scholarships of active-duty veterans and spouses. That has been nothing but success. I will tell you that for all the things that I have dealt with in my military career, the one thing that I never accepted was failure.
Thank you very much. I mean, what's tough here is that we're a planning commission. You know, we're not handing out medals or awards. And you clearly are an exceptional, exceptional human being, and I get that, and I understand what your hopes and dreams are. But our job here, I think, I mean, I can only speak for myself, is to figure out whether 24 units in a community that has many doubts about the viability of this project, this upzoning project, whether that, you know, raises it to the next level of aspirational identity. That's all I can say. You know, we're really here often to talk about things like, as, you know, our transportation planner said, you know, ingress and egress and so on. So to have this overlay of absolutely fantastic aspirational identity is great. I guess my job, I feel like my job is to figure out how those aspirations actually fit in timeline fundraising. So forgive me if I have not represented my opinion and not respected you well enough. I get it.
Oh, I don't-
But I think you get where our job is.
I understand, and I appreciate your responsibilities. I don't denigrate that at all. I just want you to know that from my perspective, as a former athlete and a huge fan of Wayne Gresky, I've missed every shot that I didn't take.
There you go.
But I refuse not to take the shot.
I'm a hockey mom. I get what you're saying.
There you go. And on the other side of that same coin, I, well, I'm going to let it go at that.
Thank you.
I think we see eye to eye.
Yeah, I think it's very, it's appropriate to say you're a very ambitious startup, and we wish you terrible success in this endeavor or any endeavor that you continue to stay in, whether it's this one or not.
Thank you.
Any questions further?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
You're basing this on the approval of this development going forward. My question is, if this does not get approved by county council, what will happen to your foundation to-
Plan B.
The veterans of this area?
Yes. The foundation is going to be, is going to be funded, and it's going to survive, because those of us who have the passion for it are not going to let it die. And if we can't do it here, we're going to find someplace where we can.
Yeah, please.
First of all, Admiral, thank you for your service. Secondly, and I want this to go through from a standpoint of your end, providing for the veterans, I think it's extremely important. If you raise $100 million with the foundation, I believe you'll be distributing somewhere around $4 million a year, with those, using your term, for it to last forever.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What happens if you set this up, you get involved in the project, and then you can't fund it? The support services, I mean, are the veterans left high and dry? Will they be, will they not have financial resources to continue to live here? For the help with the rent or the business coaching, are they going to be okay in this type of arrangement?
Sure. That actually is a primary article of what we intend to accomplish within the foundation, is that there will not be any veteran or first responder who cannot be advantaged, if that's the right term, to afford it.
What I meant was, if your funding drops-
That goes, oh, well-
The timeline.
No, I mean, will the people, will they be financially okay not having what you're providing? For example, I understand counseling can go away. Okay, they don't have counseling now, I'm not trying to be cold, so counseling goes away, they'll be in the same position they are now. But I'm talking about will they not be able to afford the rent, the mortgage payments, the subsidy on the leases and stuff like that, if your foundation isn't there?
So our intent is not to deliver the handouts, where they are completely dependent on the foundation, lock, stock, and barrel. We want to give them the hand up so that they can learn to afford housing if they can't buy it yet. We can help them if they can't pay for it yet, but we want to give them, you know, in this world, especially in the business world, there's a new term of art called adaptability quotient or adaptability intelligence. We have to help them unlearn, relearn, and reskill to go do new things with the skills that they come from within their environment. Nowhere that I have been yet across this nation has that failed anywhere. And when I intend to grow this foundation, with my partner, Mike Corey, who I will ask to come up in a minute, he is the consummate fundraiser. With him alongside, I don't see how we can fail. He has never not raised multimillion dollars in any fundraising activity that he's ever been involved in, some of which I have. So I don't believe that the heart of America will let a safety net, if you will, fall from under the veterans or the first responders.
Thank you. You answered the question I had, at least, I think you answered it. So we'll go from there.
I think we're ready for your partner.
Okay, so I'd like to ask J.R. Brown to come up. He is the former Marine, he is a Marine veteran, can never say former, once a Marine, always a Marine, and the founder of OPFAB, whom we are intending to affiliate with.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for this time. My name is Roy Brown, Jr. I go by J.R. I'm the founder and CEO of Operation Patriots FOB. I'm not sure if you've heard about us, we've been around for about four and a half years. My wife and I took our life savings and we bought two-hundred-and-sixty-eight acres to bring veterans and first responders, like-minded individuals, together to build camaraderie that a lot of us miss the most. I spent three years overseas in Iraq between the Marine Corps and contracting. I've lost twenty-nine guys that I directly served on the battlefield with the suicide. In two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, after losing five guys within a thirteen-month span, my wife and I took our life savings, purchased this property with the goal of bringing like-minded veterans together and first responders to build that camaraderie, which we think is one of the biggest contributors to veterans' suicide. So with that being said, we've been around for just over four years. We've had over twenty-six thousand visits to the FOB with zero suicides. This year alone, we've raised over two million dollars locally, so I know that the money is here, and it's in the hearts of most Americans in our community. We're here to advocate for this new initiative because my veterans and first responders that have served this great nation need more resources in this community. And what they are proposing is something that we intend to fully support and get our veterans integrated with. What's coming up next for OPFAB? We have partnered up with Boulder Crest, which is a nationally recognized peer-to-peer counseling organization. We are, by trade, I was a canine handler in the Marine Corps and as a contractor, and I've trained close to a hundred service dogs, excuse me, for the special operations community. We will, we are getting ready to kick off our capital campaign to start our service dog program. We wanna take it a step farther. I had one of the greatest jobs in the Marine Corps. I got paid to play with dogs every day. I got to deploy with my best friend, I got to cuddle with my best friend every night. From my experience of training service dogs and training the veterans on how to keep up with their, maintenance training of their service dogs, these veterans absolutely love it. So one of the next initiatives that we're gonna do is actually create a three-and-a-half month curriculum where our veterans and first responders will go through, and we're gonna give them the skill sets on how to train working dogs, just like the Marine Corps gave to me. We're gonna incorporate a business aspect and teach them how to be entrepreneurs, teach them how to set up a business plan, a pro forma, a marketing plan, so after three-and-a-half months, they will be able to go back to wherever they're from to start their own canine program. That's why it's very important for us to have some housing for these veterans to be able to move into and stay here while they go through some of our programs. I appreciate your guys' time. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Is your facility located in Beaufort County?
No, so we are in Jasper County, because we couldn't afford the land in Beaufort County, but over ninety-five percent of our veterans and first responders come from this side of ninety-five. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, J.R. I'd like to introduce Michael Corey. Mike is a Navy veteran, a Vietnam veteran, is an extremely successful entrepreneur, having started multiple companies, been involved in veterans' projects, including raising money for scholarship and training for close to fifty years. He is one of your own from Bluffton. He's a colleague that I have gotten to know from mutual colleagues as we worked together up north. He's the one who called and invited me to come down and take a look at this, and this filled part of my passion, which I lost up in North Carolina. I would also say that I've also started to fill that in up north with another proposal and work, project on traumatic brain injury up there. Mike?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was reminded by some, I was a third-class petty officer in the Navy, and hanging out with all these admirals and generals, these guys are celebrities to me. I look at them in awe, even after this, as old as I am, they're something special. My passion in life, other than trying to keep my wife and sixty-two years happy, which is, so far, I'm doing okay, is to help veterans. And I'll just give you a little quick story, a personal story. I served in Vietnam, but I wasn't in conflict. I was one of those guys that just somehow missed all of that, and I turned out to be one of the really lucky people that went through Vietnam. I got a job, fell into something that I wasn't qualified for and ended up being my career. I'm an executive recruiter. I recruit chief executive officers for major corporations, and have done it for over fifty years, so my life was, has been quite terrific, to say the least. About ten years ago, I, one evening, I'm saying to myself, what do I, what kind of legacy do I wanna leave in my life? You know, do I wanna leave the legacy that I, a great father, which I hope I am, a great husband, which I hope I am, a great friend, which I hope I am, but in reality, you know, and I've been very successful in business, but what is my legacy? And I decided at that moment that I wanted to help veterans and spouses of veterans to improve their lives. And I was being asked at that time to join a board, a university called the American College, and I went in under one premise, and I told them I would join the board, but only if I had the opportunity of building a scholarship program for veterans and spouses. They agreed, because they saw this maybe as a fairly easy way to raise money. And we did. So we started putting on annual events, which we would do here, and we started raising significant amounts of money. So over, over my career, I probably raised, you know, twenty or thirty million dollars. In just the college alone, we've raised well over ten million dollars. I'm involved in a couple of other fundraisers here in the area, one for rural healthcare and some other things. But this is my passion, and I happen also live in a community, I live in Bluffton, I live in a place called Berkeley Hall, if you know where that's at. And in my community is a war, is a world, a war hero, and his name is Fig Newton. And then I have this friend of mine, relationship of one of the great leaders in the military, and Boomer Stufelbeam. And in our program, in the annual events that we raise capital money that we, every year, we had a thing called the Soldier-Citizen Award, and we used to give it to very high-profile people. So we've given it to, and I've become friendly with, because of the personal relationships with General David Petraeus, General Peter Pace, General Jack Keane, Admiral Tom Fargo, the top, top, top people in the military have been involved in our program, and they've helped us raise that kind of money. So you asked about sustainability. I've raised, we have over a thousand scholarships currently out to military veterans and spouses, a thousand. We probably could give a thousand a year if we, if we had, so we're taking that program, and we wanna take it to other universities, which we will. This is kind of the same concept. Twenty-four isn't a lot of places to, you know, twenty-four families, that seems relatively small. On the other hand, we wanna get it right. We gotta get it right. Because frankly, this is an opportunity for us to build, do proof of concept, as Boomer said. By the way, his name is Boomer because he was the punter in Navy and the Lions, that's how he got the name Boomer, so just in case anybody wondered. So we, you know, we are, we can do, we can raise money every year. I'm not concerned about raising, whether it's one million, five million, ten million, we know what our goal is, what our program is. Then it takes different ways that we would go about doing it. We would have not only personal contributions, but corporate sponsorships and all kinds of ways. There's lots of programs, actually in Washington for disabled veterans, agencies where there's lots of money available. So raising the capital for our foundation, I'm not concerned about at all, because that's gonna be my life's work, and that's gonna be Boomer's life's work as well. So we have an opportunity, and I keep telling these guys all the time, start with a clean blackboard, let's build a holistic urban development that really takes, helps people that deserve our help, tremendously deserve our help. People like another war hero in this room, and that's J.R. He says he did his life savings, he really did his life savings, every penny of it, and it was a lot, because he got a lot of money when he got out of the service because he got injured. So these are, these are people who believe in patriotism, these are people who believe in helping, these are people who wanna do something. Boomer said it perfectly. Lot of people talk about how we're gonna help veterans, a lot of people talk about it, but we're, but a lot of people don't have the actions. And we're asking not only this group, but any, anybody who's interested in helping us move forward and bring something special. Twenty-four, yeah? Could it be forty-eight? Could it be seventy-six? I'd love it to be, I'd like to be all two-hundred and some, if we could. But we need the other piece to financially afford to build this piece as well, so the two go hand to hand in this regard. So I don't know if I'm telling you anything they haven't told you, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I've got a few.
Please.
You said that, you know, ten, twelve years ago, you wanted it to be your legacy to help veterans. And I asked the admiral back there when this foundation was founded, and it was six months ago. Is that correct?
Correct. That, what I decided, and when we started the foundation, we're not connected, but-
Okay, I think it's very interesting, actually, that when the initial, when the initial agenda or the plan to come on the agenda back six months ago, there was no mention of the Low Country Veterans Housing Foundation. And then here we are, six months later, and this has magically appeared. Don't get me wrong, I'm a retired military veteran, I've lost a lot of friends in combat and other venues, much like J.R. has. It's not fun, and I would love to do everything for venues. To me, I hate to say this, in this particular venue, it's a little suspect to me that it's Admiral Stufelbeam's lifelong passion for sixteen years, it's been yours for ten years, and then all of a sudden, we have a development that wants to go up in a very busy, very contentious area, and low and behold, this five-oh, the five-oh-one-C-three, which hasn't even been formed yet, has popped up out of the ground. I have a simple question for you. Who approached you to get involved in this Low Country Veterans Housing Foundation? Was it something you thought up on your own six months ago and just happens to coincide with the development?
No, that's a, that's a great question. Thank you. The fact is, we learn a lot through the process. We're learning every day what we can do, what we can't do. What we realize as we got more and more involved and we wanna build this, is that this is not necessarily always gonna be affordable to the veteran. We had to find a mechanism where we can help supplement what they are able to afford by giving them or donating a part of the, whether it be monthly or annually or whatever, maybe from ground up, we might have to get. So the whole thing is, the reason for the foundation is that we realized, as we got really into this thing and realized what we wanna do with the veteran piece, that if we're gonna help the veterans, we can't put any financial burden on them. So how do we do that? The best way to do that is to form a foundation or a five-oh-one-C-three. Look, I don't need the money, they don't need the money. We're not in this to make, we're not gonna make any money. Frankly, I won't make anything. It'll cost me time and effort and whatever. This is nothing about money. This is all about helping people and helping the right people. So to answer your question, the fact is, is that as we go along and we learn how to, you know, what we need to do to accomplish our goals, one of the things we realized is we needed to help supplement, if needed, any veteran that was in our program, in case they couldn't financially meet their obligations, we wanted to be able to allow them to do that. Before we, a year ago, we weren't even thinking about that, because we didn't, you know, a year ago, we weren't quite sure exactly how this was all gonna be structured. If I had my druthers, and Tony will kill me, I, Bastardi will kill me for saying this, but I'd rather have the whole thing veterans, but we can't do that. Financially, we just can't. We need the, we need the financial support of the rest of the project to make this part of the project work. But we wanna put veterans in housing that literally is not, it's not gonna hurt them, it's not gonna, and it's not gonna hurt them because we're gonna, we're gonna be there to try to help supplement their payments through the foundation.
And I understand that, and I-
Okay.
Trust me, I really appreciate, and I understand there's a need for, why it needs to be south of the Broad, where there's not that many military facilities, why it wouldn't be north of the Broad, you have the Marine Corps Station, you have the Naval Hospital, you have closer access to the Veterans Administration in Charleston. I'm not sure why this particular parcel of land, like I said, came about six months ago with no mention of veterans, and then this foundation began six months or so.
As a businessman, I can see it, it's the evolution of the project.
Well, I understand. Action without a plan is just a dream.
Right.
Totally understand that.
So, so-
But it seemed, you understand where I'm coming from?
No, 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 I totally understand. I mean, you don't know me from Adam.
That's true.
I've been getting up in front, just as this guy with a beard standing in front of you that lives in Bluffton. But the reality is, sustainability, experience, I've raised money for charities like this for over forty years. And I'm not a professional fundraiser, I'm a businessman. I run, I run a global, international business. So this is not what I do for a living. I'm doing this because I have a passion to help these people.
I understand that. So maybe I could, and I'm sorry, I really hate to-
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
How did you actually come into contact with Mosaic Development? Did they approach you, did you approach them?
No, I've known Mr. Bastardi for a long time.
Okay. And when did Mr. Bastardi present this to you, that you might want to start this legacy foundation that you've been thinking of for ten years?
Probably a year plus ago, two years ago, something like that. We've been, we spend a lot of time, as you can imagine, I mean, people like Boomer are flying in from Washington, we, it's not, it's not a faint of heart here, we, you know, we're really trying to put the right, our right foot forward and do the thing, and make sure we have the right people in front of you, describe you what we're trying to do or what we're attempting to do. We're gonna do this. So just, so I, I'm not, I, we're gonna do this. We'd love to do it where we're at, but if we can't do it there, we're not gonna stop because we're building the foundation, and we're gonna build this facility. We, you know, we have already a Plan B kind of at this point in time, but we don't wanna do Plan B, we wanna do Plan A, which is this.
I understand, and I think you have to understand, and I appreciate the fact that no matter what happens with this area, whether it's owned or not, I'm glad to hear that you wanna continue this foundation, and I certainly hope that it's conducted in the utmost transparency, honesty, and integrity, because nobody deserves that more than our veterans.
Couldn't agree, couldn't agree more.
And I wanna make sure that the people that are in charge have that honesty and integrity behind them. Obviously, this is not the place to discuss it.
No, and by the way, anybody that want, I'll give you a list of all my clients and references and stuff.
You can bring as much star power as you want. Action, action speaks louder than words.
No, 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 and, and, as I said, if you wanna go, just go to the American College Chairman and say, how many scholarships are out for veterans? A thousand of them is a lot.
That's fantastic.
You know, so we're helping people, and by the way, not only, not only the veteran, but their spouses, we have a lot of involvement in spouses.
Yeah, I think that's recommendable.
So maybe it'd be appropriate to introduce you to the other hero in this room, other than Boomer and J.R.
One second, then.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So it sounds like this was a germ of an idea almost two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, but when did it actually come into fruition? What his question is, is when did this decided to get pushed onto this particular project? Sounds like it was July.
I can't give you an exact, no, if you're, I'm not trying to imply it was years ago, it certainly was months ago, but I don't, I couldn't give you the exact date that we started talking about.
Who could that?
Pardon?
Who could?
Well, it'd be Mr. Bastardi, probably.
Okay, good. Let's just see the hair.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you again.
And I'd like to introduce Fig Newton. Many of you may already know him, so if you don't, it's, he's special, so, Fig.
He is.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you very much again, and all of the questions that you've been asking, the exact type of question you should be asking. There are some folks that, that know me, but I'm originally from over in Jasper County, grew up in Ridgeland, and when served in the United States Air Force for thirty-four and a half years, and I'm back. So I think that kind of speaks to why I am interested in a project like this, and it's one that is very, very unique of the aspects that was talked about earlier and the ones that you ask in questions about how you provide that kind of service. I've seen a number of veteran housing places around the country, but this is the first one I find, and I find this one very unique, where it brings all of those wraparound services that they're talking about bringing to our servicemen and women. And so I think it's a very special kind of project, and I think it's, matter of fact, I think it's the only one like it would be in the United States if this one gets approved and off the ground. And when we're talking veterans, and we're talking military, and we're talking education, I'm all in, okay? I, I learned about this program just about a month ago, when the group was talking to me about it, and they mentioned veterans, and obviously, we've had a couple celebrations here recently, like Veterans Day and so on, and so we got to talking about this, and they shared with me their philosophy of what they can provide for veterans, and therefore I was, again, all in. I found them to be very straightforward, all above board, and those are the only kind of people I wanna do business with, business in the sense of being associated with them. And I've done this a couple of other places since I've been back home and been very successful, but only doing it with the right people, and people that's gonna be transparent and bring all of the issues to the table, just as they're doing here this evening. So my support here, and what I'm- So, my support here, and what I'm asking is, continue to evaluate this project. Certainly would, would ask for your support of the project to prove it once again. You got your questions, answers that you needed. Thanks much. Any questions quickly for me? Not that I have a lot that I think I can offer here, other than my passion and support from my, my veteran friends all around the country. Eddie? Okay.
Thank you, General.
Thanks very much.
All right, who's, who's next? Want to keep moving here? We have a lot of people, and we have another issue to decide. So, let's, let's get on.
Yes. You have some of the questions about, I've not been involved in the foundation stuff from the legal organization standpoint. Mr. Bastardi can speak to that. I would say that I know enough, I'm not a tax lawyer. I know enough about tax law and corporate foundations to know that, formations, that you form a corporation with the Secretary of State in South Carolina. 501(c)(3) has nothing to do with the Secretary of State. So, you won't find anything in the Secretary of State's office about that in terms of the formation papers. That's done through the Department of Revenue, tax people.
And if I may, sir, I'm sorry.
No, no, go on.
There's, there's nothing on record with the IRS as of today that says that the Low Country Veterans Foundation...
I can't argue with you about that. A local attorney here in the Harvey and Batty firm, Eugene Pars, was handling that, and I had been informed that it had been filed.
Okay.
So...
I think we have an adequate picture.
That's fine. Thank you.
Let's move forward.
Helene, I mean, if you raise money in South Carolina, you have to go through the South Carolina laws.
I understand, I understand, but we're beating a dead horse here. We're beating a dead horse.
We'll never stop. I don't like being lied to.
Are there any further questions, Mr. Chairman? I approach this a little informally about where the foundation, the corporation, the foundation stands. I've told you all I can tell you. Mr. Bastardi might be able to tell you something else.
Let me, let me just make sure that we have some questions. Do you have foundation questions at this point, or have we heard enough on the foundation?
We have, Mr. Johnson, I think you said something that was not clear to me in my conversation and emails with the Secretary of State's office today, which is that if this foundation, which is in the, in its formation period, right? So, I agree with you, it's not on the radar of South Carolina Secretary of State, for sure. That was not in the documents that we got. It was presented to us right here, in these documents, as it existed. Okay? So, it's not, it does not exist. It may exist in ten months, but it doesn't exist now. But, sir, I think you either misinterpreted what I asked, or you misinterpreted for the public, which is that for a foundation to raise money and get grants and all the things that the, that you have said in your documents that this foundation will do, that has to be registered in the state of South Carolina.
Yes.
Okay.
Two things. The corporation has to be created under the laws of South Carolina. The federal government has to approve the 501(c)(3) application.
Correct.
And then, once it's approved, it gets registered.
Right, but you said the state of South Carolina has nothing to do with it.
Can we move on, please?
Nothing, I said nothing to do with the formation of the 501(c)(3).
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. My name is Tony Bastardi, and I'm the...
Yes, Tony.
Managing Partner of Mosaic Development.
You speak a little louder into the microphone. I think people can hear you.
Okay. Tony Bastardi, and I am the Managing Director of Mosaic Development. The attorney that is handling the, both the formation and the filing with the IRS advised us that, once the application is filed with the IRS, and he appears to be within a few days of doing that, it's a very complicated application, and Boomer and Mike and myself have been giving him information. But I've seen the application. He said, once the application is filed, the foundation can indeed do business as if the 501(c)(3) were already established. Pending the ruling by the IRS, which isn't ten months out, he thought it was five or six months out. I'm not an attorney, but I understood that simply that the foundation could begin its activity in raising sufficient capital to invest in the construction of these four units.
Okay.
We, we could get him to render a letter or an opinion of some sort, if that would help with the process.
I think, I think it's pretty clear where you're at this point, and the process that you're going through. So, I don't think we need to question you further on that issue. Anybody have a question, Mr. Bastardi, other than that?
I could also offer some insights into this timing issue that Commissioner Ross brought up, and I think Commissioner McMillan brought up, if that would be informative.
Sure.
Okay. So, you're correct that the application, I believe, has been around for approximately two years. There was a detour that occurred a little more than a year ago when we were asked to first go to the town of Bluffton to explore annexation, because the parcels at that point were all contiguous to the town of Bluffton. What you're seeing now is a different assemblage resulting from the town of Bluffton's passing on the opportunity of annexation. So, but it was a detour nevertheless, so we, we spent about a year getting ready for annexation. And, and this was a referral from our planning department here in the county. Apparently, there was either a policy or an informal understanding with the town that if land was contiguous to the town border, that before the county acted on an upzoning application, we'd first offer it to the, to the town. So, our assemblage back then was about twenty-three acres, including the eight acres that's still on the map. But it was all contiguous to the town. The assemblage that you're looking at now occurred later, when the town rejected the application. We worked closely with the town planners, who very much were in favor of the project, and we offered a, an amount of workforce housing that never made it into the application because it was all a series of meetings and negotiations with both the planning staff and with the, with two people on the council, one of whom became, eventually began to mayor. All of that resulted in the town making it clear to us that they couldn't annex land if it involved any amount of residential units. They were only interested in annexing land for commercial development.
Yeah, this information was in your applica, in the application, so...
Yeah, all right, but it, it goes to Commissioner Ross's question about timing. So, we then came back to the county, and that would have been earlier this year, in the early part of the year. And our company always likes to put a, kind of a community benefit into each project rather than straight rooftops and housing. So, we thought that workforce housing would, would do that as well as the community park and, and the shops and restaurants that you see on the present plan. We met with lots of community leaders, some elected leaders, and probably around five or six months ago, learned that workforce housing and the village park and the restaurants and the shops, although would be a significant benefit, wouldn't stand up to the headwinds of no growth that seemed to be prevalent throughout the region, not only in the town of Bluffton, but also in the county large. So, it was at that point that we started wondering what community benefit could we bring that would resist those headwinds? If a, if a park and a ban shell and, and shops and restaurants and workforce housing wouldn't do the trick, you know, what else might we do? I live, at the time, in Berkeley Hall. General Newton and Mike Corey are neighbors. So, in a brain, kind of in a brainstorming session with, with Mike Corey, you know, what could we do to overcome these headwinds? You know, we're already, you know, unlike Lennar and others who just build rooftops, we're already putting in a park and shops and restaurants, you know, and, and workforce housing. What is it that we can do? That's when Mike brought his lifelong passion of supporting veterans into, into the equation. And that was probably, I think you're, you're right, that was probably, or somebody said probably around July. I think that's about the right timeline. And then Mike brought Boomer down here, and the rest is history. So, I just want to, there is no conspiracy here. It's just that, that my development company is looking to bring more than just rooftops and, and to overcome these headwinds of, of no growth. Now, since then, I've met with the same group of community leaders and a few, a few elected officials, and I am getting a sense that, that everybody wants this. And it's a good thing, it's a good thing to have in a county such as ours where veterans are a part of the culture. So, you know, that satisfies our, you know, corporate aspiration of, of giving back to the community with each project that we develop.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
I would ask Bill Eubank to come up. He's a very experienced land use architect, planner. He's done a lot of work with building codes, and he needs to address two or three things that Mr. Merchant brought up. I'm not a land planner. As a lawyer, I can perhaps express this agreement.
Can I ask you, how many more speakers do you plan to have?
I'm the last one.
You have the last one?
It's up for me to wrap up.
Okay, well, yeah, but I know there's a lot of people who would want to speak up, and so I want to give them time.
Yeah, so I'm Bill Eubanks. I'm the founder of Urban Edge Studio in, in Charleston. And I know we have been at this for a very long time, so I will keep my comments brief. I feel like after the presentations that you've heard, that what I've got to say is really kind of mundane because it's land use and zoning, but we all know that land use and zoning are incredibly important because that's what shapes our communities. But we are here tonight to talk about a rezoning application. So, I'm going to get into that, and just to really quickly tell you a little bit about me. I've spent the last forty-three years of my life helping my clients navigate and understand zoning ordinances to realize their dreams for their projects. I've worked on several municipal planning projects, including Boundary Street here in Beaufort, May River Road, in Bluffton. I've transitioned from kind of straight landscape architecture to more of the land use and zoning side. Last year, I crafted a new zoning ordinance for the city of Woodruff, South Carolina. Earlier this year, I completed a cottage court overlay for the city of Keene, New Hampshire. I'm, I just rewrote the zoning ordinance for the town of Darlington, South Carolina. Should, should get final reading next month, and I'm currently working on a new zoning ordinance for the city of Lawrence, South Carolina. So, I understand the importance of land use and zoning. So, I reviewed the relevant sections of, of your ordinance as it relates to this project. In my opinion, the designation of these parcels as a hamlet place type in T2 rural was an error of the planning process that needs to be corrected. I know that you guys, in looking at your five-year update to your comprehensive plan, you're going to be considering where place types might not have been consistent with the growth that's happened in the county. Sometimes these things happen. They're anomalies. The best thing to do when that happens is to correct them. In this case, I believe that the (c)(3) neighborhood mixed-use designation is more in keeping with the surrounding existing land uses, especially with this project with mansion apartments and some limited retail uses. Most of the staff comments that support denial are based on the fact that this area is a hamlet place type. If we can agree that that designation is inappropriate, we can move forward with a more appropriate designation, which I believe is neighborhood mixed use. Staff also suggest in their comments that this plan creates a disorderly, fragmented development pattern, and that implementation of a coordinated area plan would be preferred. While it's true that this plan does not incorporate all of the parcels at this corner because you, as you've heard, a lot of those are heirs' property, the plan done by Whitmer, Whitmer Jones-Kiefer does show future access points that will provide the connectivity to allow those to be connected in the future, if that, if that were to ever happen. And I think connectivity came up in one of the questions before. I personally believe that the site plan that they've prepared shows an adequate amount of connectivity between those parcels and this parcel. No other ingress egress points should be needed, which I think is a good thing. So, really quickly, just to sum it up, it's my opinion that the plan prepared by Whitmer Jones-Kiefer for Mosaic Development provides a well-designed and a much-needed land use that would benefit the greater good, if allowed to proceed. In order for it to proceed, this rezoning should be allowed, and I urge you to recommend approval to County Council. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, Sean.
Bill, I've got some questions, and I'm going to break them up in two parts because I've kind of looked at the 7.76 acre lot, since it's not contiguous, it's separate from the other component. And setting the, the hamlet place overlay issue aside, I want to talk a little bit about the proposed rezoning. So, in that 7.76 acre lot, and this was a question I asked at staff at the beginning of the meeting, was I'm not sure how we can consider rezoning that lot as a potential traditional community plan when the minimum acreage requirement for a community plan is at least eight acres to forty acres, so it doesn't meet that requirement. The other concern, I guess, that I have is that the TCPs and the zoning that's being requested talks about providing a mix of building types, which the proposal, at least that's shown on the conceptual land plan for the 7.76 acres is all mansion residential buildings, so I don't really see the mix there. And then the last concern that I had was that the (c)(3) zoning is supposed to, in the TCP have a gross density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and I think with the twenty-seven units that are being shown on the conceptual land use plan... on the conceptual land use plan, you're looking at closer to eight units per acre, so it's not meeting the density requirements as well. And then when you move to the 42 acre or 41.4 acre site, many of those concerns apply as well. There's not a mix of residential types, and the density is much higher than what the C3 zoning category allows for. So I'm not sure how you would address that.
Well, so first of all, I can't defend the site plan. I didn't do it. But you're right. Right now, currently, that conceptual plan, which is only a very conceptual plan, does show one building type, which is the mansion apartment. Moving forward, they would have to comply with the zoning ordinance and the requirements of that ordinance, regardless of what their conceptual plan may show now. They would have to meet those requirements moving forward. With the other parcel that doesn't meet the acreage requirements, I was a little confused by that one as well. And I was wondering if they could, even though they're not contiguous, if they could be taken as an aggregate, because they would be part of the same development. And that would probably be more of a question for staff even than for me, of whether they could be done that way. Because the aggregate acreage qualifies.
Well, and even if the aggregate acreage qualified, based on the number of dwelling units they're proposing, you're still looking at almost five dwelling units per acre.
Right.
And the maximum is 3.5.
Yeah, I think moving forward, they would have to adjust the conceptual plan to meet the ordinance.
So let me get this great. You said in your closing remarks that you would recommend we do approval, and then it just shows you something that says it's out of whack. And now you're retracting, and I don't understand what you're trying to say.
No, I still think that the neighborhood mixed-use zoning would be, is more appropriate than the hamlet place type. They may have to adjust their site plan to conform to the ordinance, but it's still a better zoning classification than what it currently has.
Yeah, you're saying the conceptual plan doesn't match the zoning. And that's what John pointed out.
Yeah, and they'll have to go through a site plan review process after the rezoning takes place, and they would have to comply with the zoning.
This would be something that would be done in a development agreement.
Possibly.
Other questions? Thank you very much for your information.
I know time has been consumed. I'll be very brief. It appears to me that you all have, and I appreciate it very much, read the materials that you've been given, including a couple of letters from me. I would point out that the conceptual site plan that these questions were about is a conceptual plan. The technical requirements for the application process do not include a site plan. But staff asked us if we would prepare something that we, my client, would be interested in. And it may take a development agreement approach to deal with that. As to the hamlet place type overlay zone, the, one of my letters, both of my letters actually deal with what the code says about those things, but I quote a section from the county code, the definition of that overlay. "Hamlets are typically larger and more intense than rural crossroads and are often located at the edge of the rural and urban condition. The main street and surrounding residential fabric transitions quickly into agricultural uses and/or the natural environment." And that's just not what we have here. We all know that. That overlay zone includes part of Sun City. It includes the Buckwalter Place, even though it's in Bluffton, a large commercial subdivision where a Walmart was proposed, but the economy kicked them out. And it butts right up against the school that we talked about, and on the other side, a large medical rehabilitation facility. And I would just ask you to take this opportunity, and many zoning codes do it, to recommend rezoning. And to get rid of the hamlet place type overlay would require a rezoning of that element of the land use regulations. But to try to make it conform to reality, and that area has not conformed to that definition in many, many years, 20, 30 years at least. It's just, like the man said a while ago, an anomaly. Staff's looking at what they're looking at, and there are thousands of intersections, I'm sure, in Beaufort County. And that's one, that part doesn't fit. We can deal with C3 neighborhood mixed use, and maybe a development agreement is the way to go. But your recommendations would be very important, if favorable, and if not favorable, would also be very important. But I imagine we'll wind up in front of County Council anyway. We'd like to see you all have some opinion on the hamlet place type overlay, on the veterans component and the neighborhood mixed use. And I think staff agrees with us that, other than the hamlet place type, this otherwise qualifies for neighborhood mixed use under the future land use map. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have some, several persons who've asked to speak. I'm going to call your names, so please step up to the mic, and you've got three minutes. I will be respectful of listening to you. Please be respectful in turn to the commissioners. And as we have subsequent speakers, please try to avoid repeating what the previous one did. We'd like to add to the information, and we used a lot of time to get to it at this point. Marie D'Amico?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Marie D'Amico, and I live at 24 Camilla Pink Court in Sun City. My backyard through the trees borders on Route 170. I'm very close to what we call the Bull Hill Gate. It's the gate that borders onto 170. And it is the busiest gate in Sun City in that it is so close to the Bluffton Parkway. I have to just preface it by saying I'm really not in favor of the development of this property. I've lived here for 15 years, and I've seen how much growth has happened over this time period. One look around us, we can see how many businesses, homes, developments, storage units have sprung up in our area. We're losing our trees at an alarming rate. I know there's a lot of trees, but we are losing them. Our infrastructure is being stretched to the limits. We're now being told by Palmetto Electric through phone calls not to use our electricity, to use our dryers and appliances during certain hours, not to charge our electric vehicles if we have them, and to, you know, manage our air conditioning during peak periods. We received stickers for our irrigation systems so that we can only use irrigation for our lawns during certain time periods, on certain days. And I would hate to think that we would get to a point where we would be told when we could flush our toilets and when we could take our showers. The property is going to increase the traffic in a very busy area. We have a lot of accidents at that area. From what I understood from reading the agenda packet that we saw online, it said that there were going to be up to 245 units. I'm not quite sure what mansion units mean, luxury units, how much they're going to cost per month, how many bedrooms they're going to have. I'm assuming it's not going to be age-restricted, so we're going to have more children, which will tax our education system. And I think that the, I'm sorry, I'm going over. Anyway, I just think that the Davis Road, that what they're going to do is really going to not do well for our traffic pattern.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think it's Arlene Smith. Do I have a Smith in the audience? She must have left. I think that's Arlene, sure. Okay, how about Sherri Blaisdell? There she comes.
Hello.
Can you move that down to your mouth towards that way? I have a hard time hearing you. There you go.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. My name is Sherri Blaisdell. I live at 25 Camilla Pink Court, next to Marie. I want to talk to you about noise pollution. 170 was widened, and we noticed a lot of increase in noise pollution. The lady on the other side of me sold her house. She had it on the market for a year. She took it off the market. Then she put it on the market again. It took her a long time to sell it, because people would come into her house, check out her yard, and say, "There's too much noise. I hear trucks. There are a lot of trucks on 170. It's just too noisy." And they'd leave. This is going to bring a lot of vehicles. You're going to have potential of 400 and some, close to 500 cars, plus people who are shopping in these shops. You'll have trucks that are bringing supplies into these shops. That's more traffic. He's telling us that there are three entrances and exits, and people will leave different ones. Well, hell, I have three different ways that I can come in and out of Sun City. Nobody tells me which one that I use. I use the one that's the most convenient to where I'm going. And that's the whole point. I'm totally against this project. And I think you hear that in my voice. I think that I am really asking this commission to propose a moratorium against building in Beaufort County. Jasper County did it. It's time for more green space in Beaufort County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's the end of the comments, citizen comments. I'll bring this up to the commission for any comments you care to make amongst ourselves. And then I'll ask for a motion, either for or against. And if you want to put conditions on it, that's fine, too. In fact, there are several conditions that were suggested by both parties.
I have a question first.
Of who?
Of Rob Merchant.
Okay, Rob, can you come back up?
The applicant has stated that they are in complete disagreement with the staff as far as the hamlet place type overlay thing. Could you explain the staff's position a little bit better?
Well, I mean, from the simplest standpoint, the map that shows the place types indicates this is a hamlet. So there's no dispute there. It has to do with the definition. The definition of hamlet does talk about being in the, kind of at the edge of an urbanized area. But the other purpose of the place type overlay is to call out places where the plan recommends walkable urbanism. And that could be, so in that context, the, whether it's a hamlet or a village, it's talking more about the scale of the community. We live in an area, especially in southern Beaufort County, where there's a prevailing pattern of development that's primarily auto-oriented. And so what this is meant to do is call out those areas where, especially along major corridors or intersections, where it makes sense to introduce more walkable development. And so in that context, I don't believe that that hamlet, hamlet place type is solely meant to be in the middle of a rural area. It more has to do with the size of a neighborhood, what, you know, that could be in a suburban area like Bluffton.
Are there other places available within the county for such a place, a hamlet type overlay?
Well, there are hamlet place types identified all throughout Bluffton, you know, along the 278 corridor.
All right. Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
We're going to stay amongst ourselves. Yes, go ahead.
Did you have a question for Rob?
I do, it's sort of through Ed. Ed, you suggested that a motion could include conditions. Is it, could you recap what they might be? Or could Rob recap? Is that fair? Because it seems to me there are like 10 conditions at this point, and I want to make sure that any motion either identifies them or says, you know, without conditions.
I think one of the conditions was a development agreement that would identify the, lock in the disabled veteran housing percentages to make sure that that, in fact, became part of the agreement to go forward.
In the development agreement phase.
In the development agreement phase, which is beyond, that was something we would recommend to the county. We could also put in a qualifier for a higher percentage of dwelling units, if we felt that was necessary for disabled housing. We talked about the traditional community plan eligibility to also be a condition for potential of this development going forward. That's the three that I've got. Were there others that you all had? Did you ask for any other conditions potentially?
No, those are basically, you know, had to do with, there's no mechanism in the actual rezoning that could require the number of units, and there's no condition, because this is a straightforward rezoning to C3 that could require the type of layout of the community as traditional. So those are things that can be written into a development agreement, but not into this recent.
Correct, yeah.
Ed, what about a conditional use? That is, there's only one type, mansion type, in this, in the conceptual plan? Wasn't there?
Well, I think we are getting at, and I agree with that, is that the conceptual plan ought to reflect what the zoning requests.
It is, right.
And it doesn't, right now, it doesn't meet that. Whether that was unintentional or not, it doesn't meet it. And as it goes forward, those who view this need to see what it would look like within the boundaries for the zoning and the density that's required by that zoning.
To me, that's not a condition. I mean, that's kind of a matter of thumbs up or down.
That's, again, a development agreement issue.
Yeah, and just to remind everyone, development agreement cannot be used to get any more density than what the underlying zoning district, or alter the requirements of that. So it's something that's working in the framework of whatever the new zoning district would be.
Ed, you've told me this once before, but I don't recall. Development agreements, those are done strictly between County Council and the developers, is that correct?
Correct.
And they are readily available for public access?
Yes, I mean, and so typically, if this were- if this were to go, move toward a development agreement phase, it probably would happen when this went to the committee. At that point, you know, if the land use committee felt that there's merit to this project and they want to pursue a development agreement, they would work with the developer. But it gets adopted the same way a rezoning does with three readings of council. And I believe that there's a public hearing involved in that process.
Any other comments, questions, here?
I guess my first comment is a general one. I always get a little nervous when a zoning decision gets too bogged down in a particular land use. You know, that's like saying, "We're going to approve a commercial development because they're proposing a Publix grocery store in a food desert area." Well, 10 years later, Publix could close. So as much as we would want to see a certain land use, that's something that this body can't control. We're really looking at what's allowed under the C3 zoning district and whether or not that's an appropriate collection of uses for this location. My biggest concern, even though I recognize a conceptual land use plan can be adjusted, is that they came in with a proposal for a certain ultimate density, number of dwelling units. That's what their TIA was based on as well. And what they're proposing is not allowed under the C3. So how we can approve a zoning to C3 that for a number of reasons, excuse me, doesn't meet the C3 zoning requirements, I'm not sure. You know, Rob in the staff report mentioned earlier a maximum of 80 multifamily units. Well, they've certainly got more than 80. So you can tweak a conceptual land use plan, but until you're meeting the basic requirements of the zoning district, I just have a hard time understanding how we can move forward with a rezoning. As much as we might love to see what's being proposed in terms of disabled veteran housing, I was very glad to hear that regardless of this project, that vision is going to be moving forward by the gentlemen that are involved in that. So I'll stop there because I'm sure people, other, and we have comments.
I've just got another question. And Mr. Chairman, you might beat me with a dead horse here. But, and I'm not sure, it's probably more addressed towards Mr. Starkey as the developer than anything. So I just have a question.
It takes me a moment to get my bad hip adjusted.
That's all right.
This is a repetitive question?
No, sir.
Okay. Does it, I don't want to open the door, I'm going back to a lot of questions.
I understand.
There may be some titanium in my future.
I just have a question. And I know this was an address, and this is probably early, but I'm still trying to tie together what the Low Country Veterans Housing Foundation is going to do, what Mosaic is going to do as far as building these mansion-style executive-type apartments. And I realize this is nothing that's cast in stone, but what do you envision the cost to the veteran to be?
Okay. Firstly, Mosaic Development will donate the land under the veterans' housing to the foundation. So the foundation will have to do some kind of a minor subdivision so that meets and bounds we could donate the land. We will also donate the infrastructure, roads, parking, sidewalks, and the like. And the foundation will own, will construct it for the foundation at cost. And it is anticipated that the cost per unit will be roughly $375,000 times 24. The foundation will pay for the units at cost with a gift of the land, infrastructure, roads, parking, et cetera. The, will make some kind of an arrangement with the foundation whereby the veteran residents will have full access to all of the community amenities, including the health club, the fitness center, the pool, the bocce courts, whatever amenities we wind up being able to fit on the land, at no cost. And it is, I think, envisioned by the foundation, and that's something that they're going to determine, that the base rental unit for each of the 24 units will be at workforce housing rates as defined by HUD. So now, if any given veteran can afford workforce rates, then the foundation will subsidize those rents to the point of affordability, while at the same time making education, training, and entrepreneurship available in any of the village retail establishments. That's about all we've got so far. But it gives you kind of a sense of the framework of it. Also, not with, in addition to the veterans' property, Mosaic, the developer, will build that American Heroes Park that you've seen in the documents, and the band shell. And will assist the foundation in the maintenance thereof, including very small and quiet, relatively entertainments that we expect, you know, should occur there over time. I might add that we're very well buffered for sound if you look at the plan. And a good 50% of the 40-some-odd acres will remain in its natural state. The brand of the project is The Muse at Nature's Walk. So it is expected that there will be a couple of miles of nature walks, you know, throughout the project, which will be available as well to the veteran population. The nature's walks will be curated. You know, there'll be little kiosks here and there talking about wildlife and, you know, plant life and the like. So it's, you know, we hope it to be a project that gives more to the community than it takes back. You know, the traffic study was reasonably benign, as you've already heard. We don't expect much noise, if any, you know, coming past, you know, the buffers. So, anything else I can answer while I'm up here? Or did I sufficiently answer?
Thank you.
I'm off the hook.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments up here? Have a motion? John?
Mr. Chairman, considering KCDPA 00039-2024, I would make the motion to recommend to county council that the rezoning application be denied based on the staff report and the testimony heard today. And I will also add, even though I didn't mention this in my earlier comments, that to resolve the question of the hamlet place type overlay, I would advocate staff's recommendation that a area-wide plan be considered for this area, which would allow all of the residents, not just the ones that are a part of this rezoning, to have a voice in terms of how this particular area might get redeveloped.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, we have a second? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It's unanimous? The motion to deny the zoning grade has been denied? I like to make one closing comment. It pains me terribly to think that we're not going to be able to start at this location with veterans' disability housing capability. But I hope and expect that the county, which is looking very strongly at the needs of affordable housing, workforce housing in this county, can find a way to be a partner with this organization and bring about its values to our service men and women in Beaufort County. Thank you for your time. We'll go on now to the next issue. Hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Let me get my, wait a minute. Do we need a recess for about five minutes or bathroom break? Okay, can we take, do you want to take five, 10 minutes? Five minutes, Sean? Five-minute recess?
I'm going to timer.
Or on item number eight. Amendment to the Community Development Code, Appendix C dot four, Buckwalter Parkway, to update access management standards. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Commission. We're here tonight to discuss the update to the Access Management Plan, the Buckwalter Parkway Access Management Plan. The plan is an update to the northern, I mean, excuse me, the southern portion. We've already seen the northern portion. So this is an update to the 2021 ordinance. As you can see, there are, there is a study area for this particular plan and update, and it consists of various intersections. Those intersections start at Buckwalter Parkway and Bluffton Parkway, and it goes all the way to Barton's Run Crossing. This particular plan, we have a desire, we have key points and assumptions in this particular plan, and I'm not going to bore you off the details because you've already read everything, but one of the key assumptions is to keep the spacing at the lights at 2,000 feet. We also paid attention to the connectivity of parcels along the parkway. We've also looked at the Buckwalter Rec Center redevelopment and that proposed access point, as well as the cross school and the Shell Hall development. We also looked at the intersection, and we also reviewed the potential future relocation of intersections as well. The regional, our regional NPO, which is LATS, they perform the travel demand model for this particular access mon, access management plan, so the volumes are projected volumes that are accepted for the region. We're here tonight to, to receive any questions that you all may have, or any concerns you may have about the actual plan.
Who went to be first? John?
There's a lot to read, so Kevin, if I've gotten this wrong, please correct me. It appeared when I looked through the, what section was it called? The C dot four dot thirty, and looking at the highlights and the strike-throughs in terms of what actual language was being proposed to be changed.
Mm-hmm.
That the real, the only real amendment I saw was the language addressing the spacing between Buckwalter Parkway and Lake Point Drive. Is that inaccurate?
That is accurate, yes, yes. There weren't any wholesale changes here, yeah.
So, one of the questions I had, excuse me, as I understand it, even the proposed relocation of Bluffton Parkway with the intersection of Buckwalter actually moves that intersection closer to Lake Point Drive. Is that then where it exists today?
Yes, that's our, that's, that's our attempt with this plan, to analyze a proposed future relocation of the intersection. So, the intersection today is south of the intersection at the Kroger. So, of course, the desire, like we mentioned in the beginning, is 2,000 square feet. Currently, we don't meet that desire, so.
And so would that require the intersection with Lake Point to get pushed further south?
Yes, 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 it would be if then, a what-if, if then, so if this happens, then this would have to happen.
Okay, and then the last question I had was, if the county's no longer funding the proposed relocation or future study, what's the value of that particular text change?
Well, well, I mean, there's, there's, there's no mention of the county funding it in this access management plan. This, this plan is, 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 the purpose of the plan is to be like a compass, a guiding light for developers when they come in, they know, okay, all right, lights go here, right in, right in, right, right in's right out here, this is particular spacing, so they understand that the, the purpose of this particular road is for mobility, not necessarily for a bunch of access points. So, that's the purpose of this plan. It's not particularly set aside to be a sales pitch for one particular intersection or some, 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 some concept that's out there. This is a holistic plan for the entire corridor, so we're focused on the corridor, not particularly one intersection. But because we're doing the analysis for the corridor, we have to take an eagle, an eagle eyes view at every intersection, and we have to also look at what's existing and what potentially might happen. We won't, we, we, we wouldn't be good planners if we don't also look at what potentially might happen, so that's what you see there. If something potentially happens, then, hey, we've already decided that this is what we will do, we don't have to go back to the drawing table and figure out what we would do. If this potentially happens, we would do this.
How often do you update that? I mean, you've updated it 22, now it's been 24. Would you do an update every two years? Is that what you're talking?
Um, no, this is, uh, this is us fine-tuning the last update. So, some, a couple of things changed in, changed in the corridor, so, so now we know definitely a developer wants to do this. So because now we know the developer wants to do this, then this particular access management plan is us fine-tuning it to make sure, okay, this development is going here, this development is going here, then we actually want to make sure this, the spacing is like X, Y, Z. So this is us fine-tuning that last update.
Do any of the re-signalizations at 2,000 feet and the new ingress or regress from various points, are they occasioned by the assumption of the Buckwalter relocate, Bluffton Parkway relocation? Are they, are they caused of, by that assumption?
Oh, no, no, not at all.
So, why then is that assumption still in there?
Uh, the, the, the purpose for a street is to do a certain thing, and a purpose for a road is to do a certain thing. So, I'll focus on our parkway because it's different from a particular street or road or freeway or interstate. Our, our purpose of the parkway is to make sure traffic flows, so.
I understand that. What I'm getting to is that there was a lot of discussion about the relocation of the Bluffton Parkway in the spring.
Right.
And it's my understanding that the county was adamant about that being a dead issue and retracted any money from it, I think it was called 5B.
Yes.
It seems that, at least it appears that you've left it in here in this document, and I, I don't understand, I mean, are you working, why you would do that?
Um, the county is still adamant, the county hadn't changed. But as I mentioned before, when we do these plans, we, as planners, have to look at what's existing and also what's future. So, 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 we're not ignoring the fact that we made a decision as a, as the county. But at the same time, we're also not ignoring the fact that if something would potentially change, then we also said that we could do what we're planning to do. So, this, 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 this is, as I mentioned before, this is not a sales pitch for anything. This is a corridor access management plan, and we have to look at the whole corridor, but we do look at each intersection with an eagle eye view. So we can't act like there weren't conversations around the concept of a certain thing at an intersection. So we're, we're saying a potential future location, we're analyzing it as that. We're not saying that it's concrete, or it's finite, or that the county is stepping back from what it said, we're just saying, if this were to happen in this access management plan, this would be the spacing for the intersection, and this is what, and then this would be the changes.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't understand why you would leave it, something in there that was voted down nearly nine months ago.
Okay.
Well, and not even leave it in, but add new language.
Change the language.
Because the language that's in there today already has the 2,000-foot preferred spacing, and it has general language that says, as developments occur or other changes come up, then there's that flexibility to be able to look at the 2,000 square feet. But to go in and add 2,000 square feet south of the proposed future relocation of Bluffton Parkway seems counter to what we understand the county's position is at the council.
I'm Brian Power, Director of Engineering. So I'll just add that currently the spacing between the signal that Kevin mentioned and the one at Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter does not meet the requirements of the 2,000, which was previously in the study, or in the previous plan. So this is going back, and there was language in the previous community plan about Buckwalter saying the space, that these two intersections may need to be adjusted in the future. So this is just looking at that to make sure we have that 2,000-foot spacing, and as you mentioned, if we relocate Bluffton Parkway intersection, then Lake Point will have to move down. So this is just about maintaining that we have that 2,000-foot spacing there, so.
Question then, does, if you did that, it sounds like there have to be additional roads built for people to be able to get to those access points.
It's just the relocation of Bluffton Parkway right there that would come up to the new, where it shifted down, and then Lakes, Lake Point would be adjusted to the new intersection, but it wouldn't be any additional new roads, just what's shown in the, in the plan.
Brian, even if Buckwalter Parkway wasn't realigned, it still doesn't meet the spacing today, is that correct?
No, it does not meet the spacing today.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it sounds like we're already addressing the fact that there's a spacing issue between those two intersections without having to point out a future relocation of Bluffton Parkway, because you're, you're dealing with that issue one way or the other.
Yeah, I feel like this is just giving additional information to it. Again, in the previous study, it said that these may need to be relocated, it's just giving additional information, and again, as Kevin mentioned, this is about mobility, it's about safety, and being able to allow people to get down Buckwalter safely without having as many accesses to invade them, so.
I don't know how else to say it, but it seems like this proposal is recently published, caused a firestorm by folks down in that area. And there was a protest letter, I'm sure you've seen it, that came through today, and I don't know where that's going to go. But if it's all about language and a misunderstanding of what the language is intended to mean, then it'd be smart to eliminate the language if it's not going to impact the rest of the plan. I think the county might look at it that way.
That's something we can look at.
Especially since they voted on eliminating it.
Yeah, that's something we can look at.
Any other questions?
I have a request. Kevin?
Mr. Chairman?
Chuck Atkinson.
Yes, yeah, Chuck.
If it's okay, we would ask that, we've heard what you're saying, we understand that language needs to come out. If we could defer this, staff can go back, tweak that language, get it out. I think the premise is there, we need the information that's in this to move forward, and if that verbiage or how it's being stated is causing a problem, we can take that out. So if we could just defer this to whenever it's convenient to bring it back for y'all, staff can tweak it, agree, and we can bring it back and get it somewhere where it's acceptable.
Okay, motion to accept deferral?
So moved.
Sure, I'll second. Do we need to have a motion on that?
I'm going to make one just to make sure that we all agree with it.
Oh.
All those in favor of the motion? Okay, we'll see you when, how long, which time do you need? Want to put a time on it, frame on it?
Yeah.
February?
January's good.
January's good? I don't, I guess I mentioned January, we're up to our eyeballs already.
Huge meeting in January.
Well, you're still going to have a chance to come in, just a second, ma'am. I just wanted to make sure that the motion, maybe I made that too soon.
February, it's accepted.
Okay.
The accepted, yeah.
All right, let me, let me get this here from the public here.
One moment, Kevin. This is great, it's written, verbiage I'm sure is accurate, but pictures mean a lot more to me. So when something comes in like this, having a picture, black and white picture, because your printing color doesn't work on my, on my printer, but having something I can refer to in case I can't get to see it is very, very helpful. Thank you.
All right. I've got a couple of speakers who wanted to discuss this subject. I just mentioned to you that the applicant has requested a deferral, so no decision on either way, yes or no, an approval process is not going to happen tonight, it's going to be deferred, but your comments are important and should be included in their consideration. So with that in mind, I'll call first Mike Hagan.
Thank you for taking my comments. You guys ask hard questions. The access management plan that we just heard about, when somebody tells you it's not about 5B, it's all about 5B. I attended a town meeting, they said it wasn't about Town B when they annexed that portion of the southwest corner of the Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter. Their agenda package still had in it the new drawings of how this was going to connect, the Bluffton Parkway, the north or the west and the east sections connecting. It's still in the plan, and they still want to do it. Thousands of people have signed petitions against it. It's going to go through wetlands. What I'm asking you guys tonight to do is ask yourselves that, assure yourselves that the access management plan unequivocally does not facilitate or necessitate the building of 5B. That's, that's what I'm asking. And with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for waiting so long, too. It's been a long meeting.
Yeah, we usually don't go this long, but there are occasions. Joy, is it, Co?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Chairman and other members of the commission, thanks for letting me speak. I sent a letter, I don't know if you got it earlier.
Yes.
And I guess it's no need to re-point out what my letter said, but, one, I don't know if they gave you, there's like a 30-something page access management plan, did y'all have that to look at for this meeting? It has maps, it has lots of maps going through wetlands because with the moving of these lights, you have to build frontage roads to connect like the Lake Point Drive down to the next light, and if you go drive down Buckwalter, it's huge wetlands that they're going to have to go through. I don't know who's going to pay for it, how you could even do it. And then going from the towns, the way to the Kroger, is going through massive wetlands, and if you even go and listen to the planning commission of a guy that's putting a building in in front of the towns, he talked about how the town had him stub a road out to build this frontage road, and he said he just couldn't believe the wetlands and stormwater drainage it was going, it was going to be going through, but the town assured him, I guess they can do that. So, with that, also, the access management plan requires, number one, concept design of intersection of parkways, two, coordination and additional planning of the connection roadways, three, coordination with the property owners, of which there has not been any, along the corridor regarding the updated access management plan, and number four, update the Community Development Code to reflect changes. So if you do this amendment, you're basically doing number four before number one, two, and three are done, which is like putting the cart before the horse. And I'll have to finally read, a friend of mine gave me this information she wanted read, and she said, "The staff report provided to the planning commission is elementary and lacking. Not even a planned map with spacing depicted was included. Section A summary and background includes key points and assumptions, but no discussion on the engineering basis for the assumptions. What specifically is meant by the north-south connectivity, what is meant by north-south connectivity is desired along Buckwalter Parkway? How has the staff determined how much connectivity is desired as compared to better roadway design, lighting, pavement markings, cross rocks, et cetera? Section B of the staff report zoning map amendment review standards includes simple statements indicating agreement, conformance with other plans, and no impact, but without evaluation or supporting data. For example, how can one claim that adding a new roadway between the Rec Center and Barton's Run Tennis Courts will not have any impact on the natural environment? Any review should be postponed until the staff provide a more inclusive report and county council provide input to the constituents regarding Bluffton Parkway 5B." And as a last comment, the light spacing, they want to add a light at the Kroger gas station, and the light, the distance between that and the public's light is only 1,496 feet, so they're not anywhere close to their 2,000-foot. It's all about moving the towns to 5B. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, heard the comments. We've had a deferral motion that's been accepted. We'll see you in February with the input from all of those who've spoken tonight. That, that finishes that issue. I have one final issue for the team. That is the 2025 meeting schedule. You all got copies of it? Any question? I would, I would make one suggestion, Rob. We work a little bit harder, try to get some of these meetings down in the Bluffton area. We didn't really have any this year, this might have been an appropriate meeting to, to be down in the Bluffton area, as it involved primarily the Bluffton area. So I think in, in the future, we want to see if we can work harder to make that happen. I think we, we learn a lot when we talk with two totally different areas and audiences. Sir? We're, we're about to adjourn, do you have something burning? All right, sir, I'll allow you to, I'll allow you to speak, thank you.
Thank you. Tony Lamartine, I live in Rose Hill. There's a lot of talk about traffic and moving.
There's a lot of talk about traffic and moving traffic. If you look at our present road conditions and you look at the number of accidents, it is because of the conditions of our roads. The lanes aren't marked, the stacking lanes aren't long enough, the signalization is out of sync. That's where these accidents are coming from, not volume. You can eliminate volume with stacking lanes. You can eliminate accidents with marking the roads. You go on 278 in the middle of the night, you can't see the lanes, and those are where those accidents are coming from. So, please, get, whatever departments are dealing with this, get them to recognize it. Let's fix what we have and then determine what we need, not what we need and not fix what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for the good of the cause? Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor? Anybody want to stay? Meeting is adjourned.